Hey folks, uh, welcome to our council meeting if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We do this through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, roll call Kate.
Capola here. Mayor Trusinski.
Here.
Councilor Panetta.
Here.
Councilor, um, who is it?
Here.
Councilor Rosso.
Here.
Councilor Beach.
Here, Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Kate, do we have, uh, did we put the chief on the, uh, did I have the chief on the agenda, do we?
Yeah, it's on it.
Is, yes. So we'll, we can, maybe we could put him on, uh, I know we'll do the public hearing first. Uh, maybe after.
Yes.
After Alex.
What do you want, you want to add an item?
Yes.
Okay, what do you want to add?
Uh, just chief, uh, remarks on, uh, what do we want to call it? Cycle safety, bicycle safety in Berlin. A very current topic these days.
Can I add the motion?
Yes.
Make the motion, we add the chief's agenda.
I'll second that.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, alright, so moved. Alright, thank you, thanks Kate. Okay, uh, we have our audience of citizens now, if anyone here wants to address the council on any topic, um, what's on the agenda tonight or any other topic that's on their mind now would be the time. Anybody in the, yes, come on up ladies.
Never Joan, never.
Always happy to see you ladies.
I live here lately. Good evening everyone, my name is Joan Veely, uh, this is Christie Miano, we're the voters, registrar of voters here for the town of Berlin. Um, we're before the council today because we kind of understand that this is, as you wrap up the budget season, this is kind of our last chance, chat with you about the salaries for the registrars. Um, Christie has passed out some information. Um, I hope that we all had, you have enough copies. This is something that we put together, uh, we did present this to the Board of Finance and we'd like to present it to you as well, does the, Mr. D'Onofrio, Attorney D'Onofrio, do you need? Okay, alrighty, um. We're hoping, um, we're hoping to sort of, uh, make a correction here or, or correct a possible wrong or path that we're on. And we really want to talk to you about, uh, the salaries for the registrars. And, um, I think Christie, um, I'm going to ask you because you're kind of, uh, the expert with the numbers here. Um, and she did the majority of this work on this pay grid, that's the, your second page. And I think if you look at line number, uh, five, um, which is earmarked today, you'll see that it shows the registrar's hours as 20 hours per week and what our hourly pay is and what our annual rate of pay is now that we are salaried employees. Obviously with the change with early voting, uh, 20 hours is no longer, uh, part of our picture and that those hours have increased and if you notice on line six, seven and eight, you'll find that it'll show the increase in number of hours times the hourly wage, what that salary would be. I would like to point out that line number nine, which is 2018 reflects what the salary was for the registrar at the time of, uh, her departure from, uh, working in the company and you'll find that that is lower than what we're making, uh, more than, excuse me, more than what we're making today.
Is that Joan?
Line number.
Number nine, but what, what?
2018 with benefits is what the registrar was making. Compensation was 39 but with, uh.
But that, then they, with benefits, uh, that was, uh, Betty. Well, well, so she was the last part-timer that had benefits, benefits went away after that, right?
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
Than they are today, we've asked five years in a row for a pay increase, which we saw nine for five years.
Yeah, okay. But the, but the benefits really, she was just grandfathered in for benefits.
That was her agreement.
Yes. Well, when you guys took office though, that was understood, right?
We were also told that we're able to go to the council, negotiate a pay with the registers and that's five to five years.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, so at this point, I mean, obviously we're not seeking benefits, that's what the question is, are we asking for 401K matches and pension? No, but we are asking to be treated fairly and justly for the workload that we have. So, um, I know that, yeah, well, that's okay, well, no, go ahead and cover that. Yeah, so, um, I ju, I just lost my train of thought, okay. Excuse me, I'm sorry, just let me look back at this. I know that there is a consideration right now for a stipend. This is not something that we're aligned with and I'm going to be quite frank with you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The reason we are not aligned with the stipend is because we have been offered and were set for a stipend in the past. At the time, back in 2022, we had redistricting, which was a tremendous amount of work, not only for our department, but also I know that Kate Wall's department wasn't involved in that as well. At the time, we had negotiated for a stipend to reward us for the work that we had poured into it. Well, we went ahead and we poured all the work in, but the stipend was never realized. So when they mention a stipend to me as opposed to an increase in salary, we simply do not align ourselves with that because we don't see it happening. To me, that's just, it's just folly to even pursue that. So we're really asking you to have an increase in the hourly salary for the work that we're taking on and to, uh, and to, so that we're equally compensated, we just want to make sure that we have equitable pay for the work that we're carrying. Go ahead. I'm sorry, did you want to, go ahead. Alright, Christie was just pointing out the department heads that we have listed here. Um, they go from the lowest department head that's being paid.
Well, the hours.
The hours, and if you notice that the hours are all broken down and what their salaries are, their hours range from anywhere from 25 to.
No, so what happens is with that section of the grid, it shows a department head salary that does not include the benefits with the amount of hours worked. So being department heads, if we're working 25 hours, you would see the rate of pay without benefits versus the 29 or 30. So the next section shows it if you had benefits for those hours and what it would mean. So we did the same thing with mid-managers as well, the next grouping. So I just wanted to explain how the grid works. And so if we're telling you at a minimum this year, we're putting in 29 to 30 hours a week, you could see where you're going to be coming in depending on the tier because that first grouping doesn't even show a rate of pay increase for the added responsibilities to our department, not just the added hours. So the equitable pay, we are showing you this grid to give you those benchmarks. So it shows that without the benefits, with the benefits, the amount of hours working was being proposed. That fall below what is being put forward to Board of Finance and that's why when you asked, like, will you see what the registrar voters put in for their budget? We originally are part-time and we said we'd probably have to go full-time. But when all the early voting laws came out and all the changes came out and if we see that we're on target, we're, if, um, audits and recounts and special elections happen within this calendar year, we will be at full-time hours, right now we're on track for the 30 hours. So that's where we're coming up with, we might not be at the 35 hours right now, but if all these extra things happen, we have to be available to do the job, which will only put us over in the hour. So that's something that always happens, we never know what the year's going to bring, but we know early voting is here to stay, November's not going anywhere, we are going forward with the presidential primaries, which has the increase of our department, our target with all, all those extra things is another 534 hours to our department being added. And that's why again, with what's being put forward, it's actually going to decrease our hourly rate. So that's why that first grid, even without a pay increase.
Get minimized.
It doesn't align.
Yeah.
A question on the 500 hours? Remember when we first met, we were at 325? From the state, Secretary of State, that's what they had estimated, how, how did he get to five?
We didn't have the early voting handbook and we had to come up with a budget back in October, November before this was even decided on.
The last draft was produced in, uh, mid-January, toward the latter part of January, so it kept changing and morphing into something else. And they kept putting on more dates.
We put the right hours forward, we put part-time to full-time, we did cover that. We weren't.
Right, but you, but it was based on, at that time, they said 325 hours?
No, what we showed you was a breakdown of early voting sessions, which are public hours, which we all have the same handbook.
Right.
So when you add up those hours, it's not going to be the same as what the, um, extra training is and the added responsibility, so now that you end up doing all the other, um, where we have to be available for special elections, audits and recounts, it's only going to keep putting us towards a 35-hour work week. But when we're having a 65-hour week, a 78-hour week and a 54, 18 days consecutive without a day off in November, every November, that's a big change in our job.
Now, you, you have, uh, assistant registrars and some other assistants too, or?
We have deputies by law, you have to sign.
Yes, we have the deputies.
So with this early voting, we have to now add assistance for early voting, to run early voting, so at a minimum for every early voting session, you already need five people to keep people on hand.
Okay.
But we can't do the job, we have to hire.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, agreed, so you'll have this extra help.
But we'll be there.
No, it has to be as required.
Yeah.
We almost have to like oversee.
You can't be there 24/7 though, no one could work like that, right? I mean, you have to be there every workday during the workday. But not 24/7.
No, I just told you 75, 78, 54 hours, three consecutive weeks in a row with that.
Weeks, okay.
That's what they're asking of us.
Okay. That's for three weeks, three, three weeks out of the?
Well, that's every November.
That's November.
Doesn't count the other early voting sessions, which were the.
And the other ones are a week ahead of time?
That's seven days for primary.
Two weeks, yeah.
Um, and for presidential primary, four days, and special elections, four days. So we're hoping you have questions, we really want to put this on the record because.
We'd just like to have a meeting of the minds here, I, I just.
So just, um, so just remember now, so the budget sits in the Board of Finance now. We have no.
But don't you approve it?
Later, after they send it to us.
And it'll be too late, it becomes the next council meeting, so we have to do it today and that's why we're here.
Correct, but we can't do anything to the budget till they approve it, they will come back to us after the town budget meeting next Tuesday, right?
That's why we're just trying to make you aware.
Yes, no, that's fine, no.
Why the number should be a red flag to anybody, why are they asking this and they're only getting this and what's happening and what's the budget, you know?
And I, I just.
And next Tuesday starts early voting, so.
Yes, next.
We unfortunately probably will not be there because we'll be doing paperwork in our office.
Yeah, oh, to, to, for the budget hearing. Um, there is one more budget meeting tomorrow night with the Board of Finance. Okay, good, because they're the ones that need to, and we had a discussion the other night, right, Donna?
Just going to make a comment if I can, we did meet several times over the past week and a half and, and we did make some adjustments. Perhaps they're not quite where they need to be, but we are trying to move that way. Personally, I don't know how we go five years without any additional compensation, quite honestly. I don't know and that's not for, and maybe Oroch can speak to that, you know, uh, I'm not privy to that, but since you made that comment, of course, I'd like to hear the answer. But we did make some adjustments to it, right, Mark, the, the other night, so I'm not sure if anyone spoke to you about that or if you watched the video the other night, but there were some additions that were made to that, okay?
I had a chance to go home and have dinner.
That's a good thing, Joan. So if you have a chance to look at, I know that we did make some additions to the numbers, so. Yes. But there were several of them, which one was that, was that Tuesday night, Tuesday night?
Last Tuesday.
Uh, last week.
The Board of Finance. Yes.
But they could stipend from the 20, this January to June, which is fine because you can't.
Just one.
We're voting on this one for the side, so we, we understand that, because now the primaries, you're physically presidential.
In this fiscal year, yeah.
We understand that, we're asking about the new budget that's going to be passed.
There were two things that we did, we did something for them for this spring, during this fiscal year and then there was also for next year.
For the full year.
For the full year, so we did two adjustments.
Which was going to come out to be for the full year 12,500 stipend.
Yeah, that's where we're not aligning with you.
Yeah, and the reason for that is, I know, well, I don't, I don't know, I, you, because you've been at, I don't, I mean, you gave a presentation at the budget hearing, one of them, I don't know if there was a lot of conversation with the Board of Finance, but. Yeah, I mean, the other night and I think at a couple of the hearings, I think the thought this year or really for next year is because nobody really knows the stipend until we gather the hours and, and figure it out and, and just for sake of comparison, um, I didn't get back, the mayor didn't get back to me today, but I know Rocky Hill pays their registrars 26,000 a year and they're looking at a stipend too, I don't have the amount of it. New Britain pays, New Britain with 72,000 people pays their registrar 43,000 a year. And they have so far made no arrangements to increase it, as far as I know, but I don't know that 100%. And of all the towns we looked at, you are about the highest paid of 38,000 of, other than the cities. And that, that's some of the things that the Board of Finance brought out, some of their discussion, the other night.
But they don't have the research that we've done to support that and if we're, why should we be penalized for understanding what is being asked of us in the history of our department and we're here for Berlin and not for the other towns?
No, I can't.
In different circumstances and we're here for this year's budget, not what is for next year, we could revisit it.
Well, that, that is for next year's budget, right? This year you just have one, you try, with fiscal year, so.
From June and we would have an August, October primary and then.
Right, that, that goes into the new budget.
That goes into next year.
That's the 12/5 after. Yeah, but that, so the 25 hundreds for this year for the next, next week, right, the next, the first, um.
Which falls into this fiscal year, okay.
July 1st starts the 12/5 for next fiscal year.
But you, you're still, you're still treating it as a stipend.
Correct.
And see, that's where.
Well, not me, it's the Board of Finance, that's their decision now.
The problem that we have with it, because we have a history with a stipend.
Yeah.
We don't trust it.
I know that other.
If I may suggest that you guys plan to attend the finance meeting tomorrow night too, I think it would be a good idea. And then maybe Oroch can answer that, um, other question or comment that she had made about no compensation, no additional compensation for five years, thank you.
You get 1,000 or 2,000 every year. But the two or few for the last five years have received increases.
1,000?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's been on board the whole history of our department.
Wow, so it's different from saying no compensation at all? Oh, that's five years, 5,000.
What is a thousand, what's a thousand?
Every year you get an increase of 1,000.
1,000.
Oh, oh, oh.
Right now it's 38, but five years ago it was 33.
Oh, 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 okay, okay.
I knew that our, our hours were going to double.
I'm trying to understand the hour, I understand during the election month, instead of election day, you have a lot, a lot of hours. You project that carrying over to after the election, will you still be required to work all those extra hours?
Yes, and I think what happens after the election is that when we're closing out or whatever, um, we are always subject to an audit or recount. So there's like 14 days where we can't touch the machines, uh, but we have all the paperwork that goes into place.
I understand during that election period, but like in July, are you going to be real busy next July?
Yeah, because we, they're going to be introducing a new training system, uh, a new, uh, computer system, a completely new system into the registrar's office, so it's going to require a, a lot of training on our part because we're going to have to learn it again from the ground up. And then we have to train people, our deputies, and we have to train the assistants as well.
Do you think an hourly rate's more fair or an annual salary?
Salary increase would be nice.
But not, but not actually track your hours, because are, are you part of any type of reunion in the town hall now? You can't be.
I mean, at this point, I'm so.
Can I just add, you are tracking your hours, I don't mean to interrupt, oh, okay.
The first year, I was on the two hours in the previous register and they were paying for different than me. So you, we had offered that the council only pay the, um, the only time that should come into play is when one register is certified and the other is not. And now that is required of our department, the certification, and we have had uncertified registers and we've been certified. So the only time someone else comes in, because it's two-year terms, if they're uncertified, that would be the only time I could see the department's name.
Because there should be an incentive for them to be certified.
Is the town subject to the overtime rule? Like if it was private business, you'd have to pay an employee time and a half for those extra hours.
We don't, we don't get anything. We don't get anything, I mean, to answer, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think, uh, Ms. Beach had a question about tracking hours and I just did a, a really cruff, rough, uh, look at what we've been doing over the last four weeks and we're running at 35.25 hours a week. For, for the last four weeks.
Are you, are you in town hall for all those hours or, or are you?
Majority, and then we have some Zoom that we do and sometimes on the weekend we take the work home. I have to make phone calls.
I mean, if you add in the 500 hours to, I mean, you're, you're technically paid 38 grand now for 20 hours a week part-time, that's what it has been traditionally.
Yes.
If you add the 500 in, you're at 29 hours a week, right? If you break that over 52 weeks, it's another nine hours a week.
Yeah.
For the 500.
So that is without being on call for those added things that come up or put us over that, so we have to be available.
But that's the whole, but that's the whole 500 hours, right?
No, they could add to it, it's going to add special election, audits and recounts.
I thought that for the special election.
No, that's for the, what's up here, the primary.
Yeah, right, those are the, those are the, that's the early voting, right?
That's the early voting area, but it doesn't take on anything else.
Additional, we have to be available for that, which right now, we have five elections scheduled.
Yeah.
That's basically two months we have to be available for preparing for the election in case audits and recounts. So that gives you 10 months that we have to be here for election month. And there's at least 30 days here out of office, due to conferences, um, there's five days of that, we go to Willards, we're offsite from.
Yeah, we're at the, we're at the high school, registration, special registrations.
Quarterly program meetings, so we are on leave office for other reasons.
And a lot of times what happens is the state will, they've been coming out with a lot of registration sessions and they don't coincide with the town hall. So like this past Friday, we had to be in the town hall after the town hall closed in case somebody wanted to come in and register to vote.
On Halloween, we're here, but the, the town hall was already closed, if we come in on a Friday, we have one coming up this year, nine to, you know, five on, or eight on a Friday. So we have to host those registration sessions that are mandatory and they're not in line with the town hall.
No, that's fine, I mean, that's fine.
You, you mentioned the thousand a year, you got past five years, is that salary or just a one-shot deal?
That's the return of like the elected officials that come on board, that's in the history of the department and I did note that in the grid. In one of the charts, it is noted. I think the last key, it was around, it was the history of the department, it says it down at the key on the right hand side. That we do get that, but when I went and revisited the history of the department, that's always been on the.
During the last three to five years, uh, you find out each year your hours have increased?
Yes, the, the job has only changed since I've come on board, you know, with the.
This is.
So each, each, each and every year, you're finding out you're putting more and more hours in, basically?
Yeah, because we're, I, I don't mean to, I do want to answer your question, I'm glad you're, you're ans, and asking it. We have done a lot in the, in the background to streamline and make our department more efficient. And we've done things to cut costs and to hold it down. And so a, a lot of those added hours are just forward-thinking. In other words, we're seeing that stuff is going to happen, like early voting, and we were trying to get prepared for it back last summer when it was going to come in. And, and so, yeah, a lot of those hours are us trying to save the town money.
Understood.
Active.
So like the redistricting, the town would keep $100,000 dollars, with the way we handled redistricting for our town. And that would have had to have happened that year. So we would have had to increase all our, um, machines and equipment and the.
Personnel, election.
So, I mean, with that redistricting, it was huge for our town.
That was a tremendous.
Very impact, we were impacted, we might not be impacted the next time they hosted because the way our town used to be with the zigzag and then they just do a line and it impacted every single district in our town.
It created, went from making five voting districts to 10 voting districts, which meant that 10 voting districts had to be manned, not only with personnel, but with equipment and the training. So by condensing it, making three equal value districts as far as voter, you know, or voters, um, it helped us reduce the cost and actually recycle some of our equipment that we currently had, sort of cannibalize it to make the machines, the tabulators more effective and to give us backup machines. But that was all done to save money for the town.
And it's the understanding from our department and how it should be run because if we didn't do that, it was a food going forward as is the same district. So by us understanding that and taking on that added hours and watching if that happened, that was the result of that. And now we have early voting, which wasn't in place, but that's another reason why that was so important to do back then because now, you know, you have the potential of the 15,000 voters showing up on one election day. Now if, you know, 8,000 of them come in through early voting, then you only have seven, you know, so that was a good reason to do the redistricting the way we did it itself.
Yeah, no, no, okay, no, we, you know, appreciate the information, we know you work hard, we value you being here. So I don't know what to tell you, I, I mean, the, the best thing is to go to the Board of Finance tomorrow night. I know you've already been there once to their work session, but.
Another meeting, thank you.
Another meeting, yes, another meeting, yeah, there's, all there is this time of year is meetings. Yeah, sure.
So this is the last time that, for us, but tomorrow night, if you can plan to be.
I mean, we'll have the budget back after the, after the town meeting, April 3rd, I think we're getting it back for our decision to send it to referendum after the Board of Finance decides, right, and sends it to us after the town. Yeah, I know, we appreciate that. Yeah.
And we do appreciate everything that you ladies do, you do a phenomenal job.
Yeah.
You really do, thank you.
Has any questions between now and then, feel free to call, we are available for questions.
Or if you want to shadow us to see what we've.
That's, that's more meetings, that's more time.
To say more meetings.
More meetings. Yeah, just, just more meetings, but here's just one last little thing that, it's, it's hard, just from, it's just me personally. And I know, I know, I think the Board of Finance brought that up. If we're looking at, I mean, if we look at the town staff and we look at the pay in Berlin, okay, for, for all the town staff, town manager on down, they don't get paid what Hartford mayor gets paid, they don't get, you know, so if we're, how, as I've seen as the last, you know, eight and, and a half years as mayor, your salary is the highest of even bigger towns and, and that's the part that's hard to wrestle with, like, we don't, we don't see, let's just take Rocky Hill, but they're, they're the closest to us, they got 20,000 people, about the same size. They're paying our registrar 26,000 a year, we're paying 38 already. So, you know, New Britain's paying 43 is the last information I got out of them, so with the stipend, you would be at $50,000 a year, so, you know, it, it would be like saying like the, I mean, he's the town manager, but, you know, the mayor in New Britain, whatever she makes, that's what we would pay our town manager, I mean, you know, there's got to be equity you're talking about. Equity is in the size of the town and the size of the work, if you have 20, if you have, what, 15,000 voters in Berlin, New Britain has, I guess, at least double that, I would imagine, 72,000 people, probably more, so I'm just, I think that's the, the argument the Board of Finance made. Like trying to look at the, the towns across the state and in our area, what they're doing, um.
Well, I think.
Trying to be equitable with you. You know, I think that's the point. I I get it. We get it, but.
Appreciate that, Mark.
Yeah.
But just to sort of dovetail on that idea.
Yeah.
Somebody from New Britain has the infrastructure all in place, and they have.
Yeah.
Workers in place. They have clerks clerks that are there for three hours a week.
Yeah.
And they have a staff.
But it's seventy-two thousand people they got administered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, like, everyone is under a page change. We're not here to say, and we did do the town of Berlin to give you the comparison. We're not going off the top because we have these nonpartisan border beds, which our town ends up posting more of, and it has the whole entire town, it's accounted for that, so it adds more work to us like other now.
But but if you're looking at the salaries in the town to compare yourselves to. But what you have to look, the salaries you're using from Berlin would be comparable, let's say, to Rocky Hill salaries. I I don't know what they are with all the other managers in town. I would guess they're fairly consistent or maybe.
Jobs share with their deputies.
I hear I hear Rocky Hill pays higher salaries to their town employees than we do. That's what I hear. I hate to say that because now. Yeah, but 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 I'm just I'm just trying to say, we're trying to compare apples to apples. If if we're looking at what the pay comparison is to even even police departments, you know, I mean, that's, you know, every town is a little bit different, but they're all within a certain range. If you take a Berlin and a Rocky Hill, Newington's a little bigger, Prummo's a little smaller, but the pay is all representative of of that particular town. So all the jobs in the town represent what's unique to Berlin, but also if you look at all the the smaller towns with same population, Berlin, I I don't know what it is overall with the regular salaries, but we're probably in the middle or maybe we're higher or lower, but and and your pay does stand out as being the only town we found was Ridgefield that was at thirty-eight, forty thousand in our same population range.
If you go over down down toward Wilton or Montville, you'll find there are forty-four and fifty-five.
Okay.
Thousand.
And they get punished if that every election.
Going back to Rocky Hill.
Yes.
I had a chance to talk to the registrar over there.
Yes.
About this.
Yes.
But a separate item.
Okay.
He was very concerned because he was also asking with the with the hours being increased.
Yeah.
He was asking for a big bump in the salary.
Yeah.
Because he said, you know, I I don't know. I I signed on for this job thinking it was.
Yeah, sure. Oh, I get that. I get that. Yeah.
So everybody, all the registrars we talked to are in the same boat.
Oh, sure. Of course. Right.
We did our homework.
Yeah, you did. You did a lot of work. Appreciate that.
The other towns, what they need to do for their registers because they have.
They're calling us, yeah.
Right, so a twelve-five increase is a thirty percent increase on your salary, twelve thousand five hundred dollars, thirty percent increase.
We have fifty percent more hours.
Well, we we don't know that yet, though.
No, you know that.
We don't know that.
You know for those hours, and that's in.
I I think that we were just trying to wait and see how this year went. That's really what we were trying to do.
I don't know.
And that's, again, let's I talk about it tomorrow night, definitely with the Board of Finance. We'll be there, too.
Yep.
And see what.
Planning on being there.
We can do. Yeah.
You appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Ladies, thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're still in the the audience of citizens, yes. Anyone else in the audience of citizens? If, yes, sir?
Evening, gentlemen, Brian. Good drive. Question and complaint that I have. Up to the avenue. Let me get set my car, my bicycle. I was there for quite a while watching the police do a phenomenal job. I have the highest respect of police by father's side. At least throughout the family, you're brought up with respect for it. And some disturbing things I heard in the last couple of days is kids basically are still riding in the road, in the lines, on the back wheels. I've seen it many times. And I heard that they're saying that they have the bicycle accident, F the police, you know, like have to find out. I get kind of conflicting stories, you know. But they're saying F you to the police. Now, my grandson was over tonight, and he says, he's fifteen. I says, Tommy, what's going on in Berlin? He told me, well, it was from Plainville. I get I hit by the bike, everything. Now, from my understanding, and I'm not going to get too far into it because I didn't realize you have the chief here.
Yeah, we're going to address that issue. Yeah.
Okay, well, seeing that the parents are saying you're picking on my son, I'd get an ass whooping.
Many of us would have.
Get on my son. And I'm going to bring up and is if you get the kid's name, you call the parent, why can't the parent get a warning next time he gets a fine, a ticket? Is that possible? That's why I got up.
Well, the chief can answer that. It depends on the statutes, whatever they are.
I'm going to throw out there because if the parent is going to stand up for our police, you know, then ticket him.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for listening, and I want to step on the chief's.
Appreciate it. No, appreciate your comments.
They're great job in this town. You have a scanner at home.
They do.
They're phenomenal what they do in this town.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you. We agree. Next, audience of citizens, anyone else in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Any hands raised? See any? All right, do we see any? No, nothing? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the audience of citizens and move on to our consent agenda.
You have a mayor's update.
What's that? No, oh, nothing for the mayor's update. Yeah, we got we got enough to do. Got enough updates tonight. Yeah, well, yeah. Ah, but a big meta boom. Yeah, it's okay. We got seven items on here. We read them beforehand. Obviously, they're in one, mostly accepting some donations. What are we doing here? Donating some. Number three, Trail Masters are running that race at Ragged Mountain, so we're asking to approve the request for their money in that race, the request by the Berlin High School Riding Red Code Cycling Club. They're doing a race at Hatchery Brook. I think they've done that before. Work with the applicants, keep the trail, work with the police department, traffic management coordinator with the police department, looking to associated fee waiver. Number five, approve waiving the police fees in estimated two thousand dollars for the wine and beer tasting event at Berlin Fairgrounds in May, approve waiving the police fees in an estimated amount of one thousand thirty-six dollars for Mr. BHS event April twenty-first, and accept donation of four hundred and fifty dollars and appropriate the funds to the supplies expenditure account for the police department. Those are our seven items. I know we've read them before, so we will go ahead and take a motion on the consent agenda if there's no other comments.
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Donna. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved. All right, so we are now to our public. Do we have a public hearing? I'm sorry, folks, we'll it it should be quick before we get to our new business and get to the right page here. Lots of paper. Yeah, I got. Yeah, here we go. So I'm going to call our public meeting to to order. And our where's our purpose of the public meeting here? Where is it? She? Oh, here we are. Sorry, I didn't that that I didn't see. Ah, we have the town of Berlin, so we have a meeting tonight. It's to to comment on an ordinance that requires the town to fund the actuarially determined employer contribution for each active defined benefit pension plan. And that is, we just, as folks know, we implemented a pension plan, and from unfortunately past experiences, the pension plan back a number of years ago did not get funded. So when it came time to pay out the legacy, folks that were in the pension plan, we had millions of dollars of obligations, and I think we had a hundred thousand dollars in the plan. So we certainly do not want that to happen with this pension plan. That had some different features to it, a little bit different, that had a one-time lump sum payment, which this doesn't have our new pension plan, but it is still an annuity that we need to obviously keep invested. So we want to make sure with this ordinance that it always gets funded by future councils and town government. So now would be our public comments from anyone on this particular item. Here, any public comments? I don't hear anyone. No one online. Okay. No public comments? We'll close those. Town council comments? Did I say any comments?
I just want to say I support this strongly. I've been here long enough to see what happened when we didn't, and years we had to come up with two or three million dollars to take care of people's obligations. So I think this is important responsibility for the town to do it every year.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to add, we've been digging out for years.
Yes.
It feels good to finally see a light at the end of the tunnel, and I certainly support this. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else?
No, I just think from being on and sitting on the pension committee.
There you go.
I think this is a very good thing and highly recommend it.
Great. We're good. Everybody's good. Yeah. All right, that's good. And again, we, you know, worked long and hard with the with the police department, with the town, with the, you know, all of us that were involved in that, getting the pension plan in place. Thank goodness we did to compete for candidates we need here in Berlin for to fill our spots, which everyone's competing for. So funding it is very important, obviously, to keep it rolling. So that's good. So that would end this public hearing, and then, of course, we'll we'll be voting on it at a future council meeting. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Thank you all. So now we'll go on to our regular agenda.
Wait.
Agenda item.
With the chief.
One. What? The chief, we put the chief two, right?
This is number two.
Number two. Yes.
One B.
One B, one B, one B, two, whatever, whatever we want it to be. Yes.
First item on the agenda is with the resignation of Mr. Steve Wilson, police commissioner. The council has to appoint someone from the same party. And I believe, Mayor, you have a recommendation or appointment?
We have a candidate. So Mr. Alex Gianni, who we know is in the audience tonight, we appreciate him being here, former town council member. Welcome back, Alex. And we appreciate your interest in the in the police commission to fill fill that spot. And tonight, we'll we'll be appointing you. So we can.
I see.
Question? Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
I don't make it a habit of speaking for Republican candidates. But Alex will bring some great experience and integrity to the police commission, so welcome.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, yes, please.
I want to personally welcome you and look forward to working with you. We've had a little bit of work together in the past, and I look forward to much more in the future. Welcome aboard.
Yes. That's anyone else? We're good. And I I think the the good thing, one of the things with Alex, which we have missed, and I, you know, I think we want the police commission as we want all of our commissions, including the the council, Board of Finance, all of our boards and commissions, to have people with different backgrounds. I mean, that's important, you know, there's expertise. We all have different expertise, and I think the one thing that was missing on the on the police commission, which has been there for years, we've always had a couple of, you know, officers retired mostly, but whatever, Alex is, you know, an officer with the state police now, a major, if I may. And we're happy to have that expertise because we we lack that, not that the folks that are there haven't been handling and doing a good job, but I think it's just another little area that we need a little knowledge, which would help everyone, and they all bring their talents, and they've all done great, but I think this is a good addition. So again, welcome, Alex. So with that, we could take a motion.
I move to appoint Mr. Alex Gianni to fill the unexpired term created by Steve Wilson's resignation from the police commission.
I will gladly second that.
Second on that. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, so moved. Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Kate.
You're welcome.
Your firm is a case safety that you will basically be charged with torturing of a member of the police commission for the town of Berlin.
Keep pulling them back in.
Hey, congratulations, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Congratulations, Alex. Official now. You got the card.
It's a badge, too, right?
You got the guy. What's that?
It's a badge.
Yeah, it's a badge. I don't think it needs a badge, but.
We don't have to give him a card, do we?
Yeah, yeah, he knows the guy. He knows the guy.
Have to give him a card, do we?
No, no. All right, great.
Let's move on to item one B.
One B.
Noted by town clerk.
Yes.
It's to discuss cycle safety.
Cycle safety.
Chief?
Yes, chief.
Everybody?
Hey, chief, how are you? Thanks for coming.
Good.
And and chief, I.
Do you really have a choice?
No, we didn't. No, yeah, you always have a choice. But, you know, unfortunately, we asked the chief here, you know, in light of what occurred last week, and update us, too. The boy is recovering.
Very well, I guess.
Oh, that's that's good. That that is good to hear. Yes, we're happy for that.
Yeah. So even before the person who got hit last week, last Monday, we were in this room for the finance board joint meeting, and one of the concerned citizens talked to me about the bicycle safety issues and all. And our department's been doing active work on this for months now, going back to last summer and all. So I'm going to hand you a packet. Basically, I brought the author of the lieutenant, author of the letter, Lieutenant Sean Solik is here, and our youth officer detective, Kevin Chaffee is here. I'm going to have each of them come up and talk a little about about what's the contents of this because they authored most of it. You'll see we have a comprehensive plan that we've been working on since before all this, trying to deal with this issue. And then on the back couple pages is information I put out on a social media account that I have under my chief McNally, which really spells out the law and what can be done and what can't be done. What's happened is social media, Eboard Warriors, they make it up as they go along, and some people shoot things out for effect, and there's a lot of misconceptions about how we can issue tickets or who can get fines and all that. So that information is in this packet, so I have enough for everybody here. So there's seven of you here. I'll ask that you just take one and pass it down. Pete, do you need one of these?
Yes, because I have it, and I don't know if a roast food's one.
I mean, a lot. There's a poppy.
So we have some different items here that are numbered, from prevention to addressing some of the issues, looking outside the box in some of the things that we want to do, and then enforcement is always going to be the last end of it for us because we're dealing with juveniles, generally speaking. So I'm going to ask Lieutenant Sol to come up and talk about, he's got bullet points and all, with more in depth on on what you have in front of you.
Great, thank you.
I'm showing. Thank you, chief.
Lieutenant Sean Solik, just want to thank.
Welcome. How you doing?
Thank you. Thank you. I'm doing good. I just want to thank the mayor and the council for inviting us here to speak about bike safety. This time of year, obviously, when the weather breaks, it gets warmer. The kids are out in the community, and we do like to see that. One thing I want to say is when we're addressing bike safety, kids out riding in the community, no officer would ever take pleasure in taking enforcement action against a kid. But I can assure you, we would all share in the same sorrow as the family and the community if there were a tragedy involving a child. So we take this issue very seriously, and obviously, our goal is to protect the public, children when they're out in the community. And we do that through education. And we do that through education, partnerships, engagement with children. And like the chief said, lastly, is enforcement. So some of those partnerships that we engage in are, they're, they're programs where we're in the elementary schools, where we could start talking about bike safety. SRO is in the high school, and he goes over to the middle school. And we have programs there touching base with kids. They have a cycling club at the high school as well, which is great. And we do have programs with Girl Scouts and Cub Scouts. We do bike safety talks every year with various Cub Scout dens and Girl Scout groups. So you have a copy of memo I provided the chief recently. Many of these programs are ones we've had in place for years that we do every year. One to start off is the Safe Kids Wear Lids program. Detective Chaffee is going to be rolling that out very soon. We roll that out every spring. We partner with a local ice cream shop and have officers identify kids wearing their helmets. And, you know, positive reinforcement is the goal there. Kids, they're going to wear their helmets. Parents are going to make them wear their helmets. Not many of them want to. So it's really a uphill battle. But if we can get kids to do that in the community and get rid of the, like, it's not cool to wear helmet stigma, then it could save one child's life. It's worth it.
Is there a statute for that?
There is a statute.
Under a certain age?
Statute for fifteen and under.
Fifteen and under.
Helmet.
Okay.
The penalty written in the statute is a warning.
Gotcha. Okay.
The statute of words, basically.
Yeah, exactly. Yes.
So another thing we're going to do coming out soon is increasing our bike patrols. We've had a number of bike patrol officers for years. Every year, it's difficult due to staffing, because if we put an officer on a bike patrol, that's an officer that's not in a cruiser responding to everyday calls. But we have come up with a plan to do so that doesn't break our bank, obviously, because we have to keep that in mind. But this important issue warrants a response to, to put officers out there, engage the kids that are riding bikes after school on nice days and weekends, and just be out there with them. Because kids are riding their bikes and an officer pulls up in their police car, many times their, their first response, if they're the kids that are not doing what they're supposed to be doing, is to ride away from them. And we don't know who they are. We never get a chance to talk to them. But if we can get officers out there with them on bikes, you know, they can ride around with them in parking lot. Say, I see what you guys are doing. Let's find a safer place for it. Maybe we can get some, some buy-in for those kids that way.
Let's, let me ask you something. I mean, interrupt you. What areas would you concentrate the bike patrols on? Would they be around the school areas or would it be downtown or residential areas?
It's mostly business and the business quarters like New Britain Road, Farmington Avenue, Mill Street, all those areas where if we can engage kids in those areas that are less safe for them to be riding, maybe we can get them to move to safer areas like neighborhoods or, you know, the high school parking lot. There's kids always playing basketball and tennis, and now we have the new field over there. There's track. So there's kids there all the time. So maybe they want to ride there in a safer location than in the middle of the road on Farmington Avenue.
Thank you.
Anything we could do to try to get them out of the dangerous areas would be helpful. Another program, we're going to be having our SRO try to reach out and partner with some BHS students. They have a great video production club over at the high school. We, we don't know if, if they have availability or the time and resources to do so. But we would love to partner with some students or the bike club over at the high school to create some public safety announcements and videos to put out on social media, maybe reach kids and parents that way to just drive, drive home how important the issue is. And then a, another thing, I think we had done something like this years ago is kind of like a community bike safety event where we could pick a day and partner with, we have two local bike shops in town. We can reach out and see if any of their bike suppliers are willing to sponsor helmet giveaways, anything to, to create an event to get kids in town out, you know, doing the right thing and having safety talks at those events in a safe location. That's something we're going to be looking forward to in the next couple of months. And the last thing is just to partner with parents. It's really a partnership because we all know kids don't always listen to their parents and kids don't always want to listen to our officers when they kindly ask them to do the right thing. But if we're all on the same page, I think we're a lot more likely to be successful. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask Detective Chaffee is going to come up and go over kind of what is in our tool belt when we deal with juveniles and the different steps we can take from at least severe to obviously enforcement would be the last thing that we do with children. And it's always the one we try not to get to that point, sometime unavoidable. So Kevin, come up.
Before you conclude, one thing I might want to add or that may help you is that if you can contact the, the local Elks Lodge, New Britain's close here, they do have a Connecticut Safe Kids where the Elks will actually donate the bike helmets if you do some type of a rodeo or whatever. And that, that's all covered through the Elks. And they, we've done those, I've been in Elk thirty-two years, and we've done those in the past. And, you know, it might be something to look into, and you can contact me as I, I am an officer at the Elks in New Britain. I'd be more than happy to get any information you may need.
That would be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that's great.
I had before Kevin comes up, just a quick, where he goes over our options and what we have in our tool belt. Since the beginning of 2024, we've had nine documented, whether it be call-in complaints or just officer-initiated contacts with kids riding their bikes in an unsafe manner or creating some type of disturbance while in a group out in the community. That's not to say that there's only been nine events. Obviously, that's only nine documented events. We know that many times the kids are not there when the officers arrive. And sometimes we just can't be everywhere.
Is, are those mostly on Farmington Avenue or no?
That's, they're likely.
There.
That's their main thoroughfare there.
Yeah.
And really, if they're anywhere else, they're less likely to be causing a problem and drawing attention to themselves.
Yes.
It's when they're anywhere where there's high traffic areas.
Sure.
And then obviously, there are bike laws. Bikes have to travel in a, in a safe manner, just as cars do, and follow the same traffic laws. But a lot of times, they don't.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Evening, everyone.
How are you?
Kevin Chaffee. I'm a detective with our police department. Beginning of the year, I just was appointed to our youth-specific detective role. I'm mainly the guy in.
Congratulations, I think. I think, yeah.
I think too. I don't know. There's a lot of stuff going on. So I'm fairly new to my, to my role now, but I'm excited for it. This is kind of the, my niche. This is kind of what I'm into. So I, I'm excited for the challenges we're facing so far. That being said, I've been working closely with Lieutenant Solik to try and address this. Obviously, what happened last week was, you know, what we're trying to avoid and been trying to avoid. This is a problem that we've been tackling for a while now. It's not anything new. So we've been working together and trying to show at least what's been documented. It's probably a little bit more as we dig into the reports a little bit than just our nine. There's been a lot of cases. And unfortunately, the more I reviewed it, it's not just related to just bike safety, you know, them weaving in and out of traffic. And you know what can happen. We've just seen it from them not following simple bike safety. We have incidents involving the same individuals that are creating enough of a disturbance that we've had to trespass these same groups of kids from businesses and Farmington Avenue and Webster Square Road. So it's far exceeding just the bike safety issue. You know, it's clearly resulting in some kids not being allowed to go to some of these businesses as a result of their behavior. So that's not to say, you know, that bad kids, that there's, you know, trouble going on. But it's just to kind of show everybody at least too that there's a, it's, it's difficult for us to try and just simply educate and warn them each time that we interact with them. Every single time, I can tell you that our guidance has always been, our officers are always trying to educate as soon as we contact any. That's always been my recommendation to them, is we're always educating the kids first, especially with the bike safety stuff. And we're always contacting parents, even if it's not something that's going to result in enforcement action. We've always operated since I've started here. Seven years ago, it's always been the, our, our normal operating business to educate the kids and then always contact the parent, let them know, hey, we had a conversation with your child, so it's not a shock when they go home to say, hey, we spoke to a police officer today. We're always involving the parents. Trying hopefully this gets quelled at home so that we're not dealing with it out on the street. I wanted to share just that I was assigned back in February. I had sent out a, some guidance to our police officers on patrol to try and address this far before we had the incident we had last week, to try and give some guidance on what we can do. I've been working directly with Jimmy Miller, the Director of Social Services, and what we can do to try and combat this where we're not getting to a level of enforcement that is requiring us to send, you know, these youths to, into the court system. That's not our goal. It's never been our goal. We also don't want to get to a point where we have to issue infraction tickets, because who's ultimately paying those? That is the parents. It's not going to be the children. So we want to make sure what we're accomplishing is something that's going to benefit them and prevent this problem in a way that doesn't result in court action. So with that guidance, I provided our officers with, basically, the guidelines have always been, first time, we always want to document who we're talking to, or the youths that we're dealing with. Is it the same kids? We want to make sure it's documented that we're not dealing with the same kids four or five times. And the only way to know that is to get their information documented in a report, contact the parents so that we have an idea what we're dealing with. Always educate, always educate the parents as well. Warning, that's kind of where we're at. Discretion of the officer. We run into the same kids again. We're getting to a level now where it's either going to result in some type of infraction ticket. I've listed, gave officers multiple statutes related to just simple operation of bicycles on the roadway, how they're supposed to be operated, what they're allowed to enforce. Juveniles that are sixteen, seventeen can get a ticket just like us adults can get. And I said earlier, who's paying that? Probably not the kids. If they're not working, it's going to be the parents, right? We're going to make sure the parents are aware of that too, because if they're not going to deal with the problem at home, then they're going to be paying. And I'm assuming after one or two tickets, they're probably not going to want to keep paying. We hope we don't get to that point. In lieu of infraction tickets, we've also been discussing Social Services expressed juvenile review board. We fortunately, because we're, I think we're doing a good job, we haven't had many juvenile review board referrals. We're starting to utilize it more, especially in situations like this where now if we are running into the same children again, instead of just issuing an infraction ticket or sending them to court, we work with the children and their parents and say, hey, would you rather? It has, it's a completely volunteer program. If anybody's not aware of what the juvenile review boards are, it's completely voluntary, and that means both parents and it's, have to be on board with that. My understanding is that the parents can't just say, I'd like my child to participate in a juvenile review board because I don't want them to enter into the court system. That's great. I hope, I would assume all parents want that. But if we get a child that goes and speaks in front of myself and Social Services and says, yeah, I'm just going to sit here. I'm not going to participate. That doesn't work for us. So they aren't going to be allowed to do that, whether the parents want them to volunteer or not. But our goal is to hopefully put this out. If we're running into the same issues, that we could utilize the juvenile review board to at least get something implemented that keeps them away from getting an infraction ticket or getting them into the court system, program that can get them involved in some type of community service, speaking with Social Services, some kind of treatment or some kind of, something related to what they're doing to try and quell the problem. That's the goal ultimately with, obviously, enforcement. If we can't utilize what I've already expressed, the ultimate goal is going to be that, fortunately, we're going to have to start issuing summonses to juveniles, which I hope we do not get to that point. There's been plenty of guidance to our officers. That was long before the incident that happened last week. They're all aware of it. We've, after looking through it, the problem has been progressing even before what happened last week. We're at a point now where they're not even stopping to speak to us. So we have officers getting complaints. A lot of times, we can't locate them. But we've had documented cases where large groups, even larger than our normal six to seven youths, are hanging out in a parking lot after weaving in and out of traffic. An officer simply pulled in, not even having lights on, sirens, anything like that, just to speak to them, and they scattered in all different directions. That's where we're at now. And as we've just seen what happened, we'd hate to see somebody scatter away from us, go out into traffic, and we see what would just happen again. But that's where I hope our bike patrols being out there, a little less intimidating. We're out there riding bikes with them too. You're showing them how you're supposed to be riding in the street. Hopefully, we can make those contacts. I've been on our bike patrol unit myself for a number of years now. I know I'll be out there if I'm allowed to be out there during the day. I've given the same bike safety beaches to our Cub Scout groups almost yearly. So we are out there. We are doing things. We're just trying, want everybody to be aware of that. The efforts are there. But we're also running into a lot of situations with a lack of respect for us, and it does make it difficult on us. As I'm sure everybody can kind of imagine. But there is a lot being done, and it's not just strictly enforcement action. We hope we're not going to get to that point. But that's kind of where we're at. Other than that, I don't have much more.
I appreciate that.
Questions I.
Yeah. Appreciate that. And so I assume, because you've been doing it for a while, you know, before even the unfortunate incident last week, you've talked to some parents. And what was the parents' response when you spoke to the parents of some of these young, young folks?
So it's mixed. A lot of the times, if it's a child that we haven't necessarily run into multiple times, like I said earlier, usually one conversation to a parent, knowing that we talked to him for any reason, and it was, hey, we got called here for this. Usually, we don't see that child again after that, because they don't have a good talking to.
Yes.
We hope.
Yeah, of course. That's what we.
Problem is, we've also gotten some calls from parents that seem to think that the calls generated are targeting their specific child or with the things that go on on social media too.
Sure.
Chief had said, alluded to earlier, there's a lot of misinformation out there. A lot of keyboard warriors, for lack of a better word, that are putting out misinformation. And people take that as a personal shot at their own child, saying, oh, my child's not part of this. Or they're being, you know, profiled a certain way. They're not a troublemaker. You know, they just have similar bikes to those other kids. Whereas now, we're starting to get documented instances where their name is coming up multiple times. So it's kind of hard to dispute that. So it's mixed.
Yeah.
We get a positive result, but a lot of times, we're not getting much support, which is why I'm saying we're starting to get to a point where we need to either start offering some juvenile review boards or it's going to get to a point where our hands are going to be kind of tied with issuing summonses. I don't know what the court will do at that point, but at the same time, it's not so much that we're able.
Then the court's hands. I mean, you issue the infractions, let the court deal with it, right? Whatever they're going to do today. I guess none of us know that. But so, I, I mean, I would think we're, we're getting to that point of infractions. If you're talking to the parents, if they won't, you know, discipline or talk to their kids, and you've seen the same kids out there over and over. And juvenile review board, I guess, is voluntary. So my guess, just the assumption, which could be wrong to make, but they're going to want to talk to their kids. They're not going to want to go to the juvenile review board. But hope, hope, it's worth a shot. I agree with you. That's at least, give it a try.
And they get one chance.
Yeah. Oh, they do. That's what it is?
They get a chance to do it as soon as they've declined to do it.
That's it?
As long as it's a nonviolent offense.
Yeah.
Typically, low-level crime.
Yeah.
Press passing or some of the.
Yeah, sure.
Dealing with. Even this stuff, it's, you know, they fit perfectly.
Yeah.
From twelve, we've had twelve-year-olds out there up until, you know, sixteen, seventeen. So it's been a, it's, it's a broad range, but they're all suitable. Social Services has agreed that they're perfect candidates for it.
Yeah.
Once they choose that they don't want to participate, or they go to it, we recommend them to it, and then they just sit there and they don't want to participate in it, that's it. The next time we run into that same child, they don't get that chance again.
Yeah, one-shot deal.
One-shot deal, and now the court is kind of the only option.
Yeah.
At that point.
Well, maybe, you know, I mean, certainly give it a try. I would, you know, as you guys are, we appreciate what, what you're doing, what you have been doing, and how after what happened last week wouldn't shock some kids, although they're young people. We got, we were all young once, but the parents in particular, you know, seeing what has occurred and if they know their children are out there weaving in and out of traffic, as we've all seen them on Farmington Avenue. I don't think any of us have driven down Farmington Avenue the next, last few months that we haven't seen what, what's going on there with the, these young people risking certainly their lives and, you know. What, what's going on there with, with, uh, these young people, um, risking certainly their lives and, you know, all of us. So, yeah, I mean, I, it's a tough job today. We know it's tough. We appreciate what you guys are doing. It's law enforcement today from, it's tough with whatever you're looking to do, but, uh, you know, I, I, I'm glad there's some infractions that we could issue. And I, you know, to me, if they don't want to do the juvenile review board and you got multiple, you know, violations or, you know, multiple encounters with these folks, uh, I don't know. I mean, somehow you got to get the attention of at least the parents. And maybe the court is the way, and I'm sure you guys will proceed with what, what you think is best, but, uh, it, you know.
Parents probably don't want to hear that at the same time.
Yeah.
So we're all clear too.
Yeah.
Um, just tracking it since January.
Yeah.
All the cases that I reviewed, we've been out there a lot and I can tell you there hasn't been one ticket or anything issued. So.
Yeah.
We are trying our best to not get to this level. That's.
Yeah.
That is the goal. Um, but we have been out there for months without issuing anything. So, I want anybody to get the information that we're out here just trying to enforce.
No, no, no. I, I, no, I, I think we all, we know that. We've heard that. We know that. Um, with, yeah, yeah, we've seen it too. We've seen you out there, but, um, with someone getting hit and thank God, you know, looks like he's recovering. Um, we might be at that point. Uh, I mean, I'm just, you know, I don't know what more we could try and show these young people. This is what's going to happen unfortunately. And we don't want it to happen to someone else. And I wouldn't think any, any, you know, young person or parent would want to see that happen again. So I don't know, you know, I think the infraction way, just my own personal opinion to, to maybe get their attention, especially the repeat offenders. And maybe, you know, I think we're looking for the attention of the parents to hopefully step in and, you know, that would be the, the best way, I think, for all of us to resolve this, right? But, um, I, I don't know how you get folks' attention. Sometimes they do have to go to court to get their attention. Um, I don't know. What, what's your experience with court with something like this? What ha, I mean, are they, what is the court? I mean, you know, court system is. Yeah, well, yeah, I know. It's tough today, right? Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know it's changed. I, I know it's changed. Yeah, I know. Agreed. I agree.
Tonight, and we had discussed it before. But when we talk about education, it's not just the education of youth.
Right.
It's great when you get them earlier age. Run a bicycle road.
Sure.
But we need to educate parents. And how do you educate parents to start taking responsibility for their kids when there's no consequences? And the system doesn't give us a lot of consequences for parents who don't do that. So, yeah, what would we be looking at down the road for enforcement? Well, if a parent's starting to give us, you know, issues, well, there's always that risk of injury charge.
Oh, I see. Yeah.
Yeah. But that's, that's the far extreme.
Yeah, that's, that's off. Yeah, that's the far extreme.
And that's not what he wants to do. That's not the J R B that we have in town wants to do.
No, no.
Once you get, like, once you get a kid into the system.
Yep.
You know, then everybody's going to wrap their services around that child and say, well, you know, this, this is a problem.
Yeah.
But we know it's a problem.
Well, yeah.
So.
Yes.
Maybe you should offer the course to the P T A instead of the children. Say, make sure your child has a light on his bicycle and has a helmet and, you know.
Well, that's like the second part of the packet I sent where I put out that information on Saturday. Because people looking at my social media are not kids. They're the adults.
Right.
Who will comment back. And one of the problems we have is that, adults don't know the rules about, you know, bicycles, cycling safety. If you look it up online, the first thing it says in Connecticut, bicycles are treated as motor vehicles. You gotta stop for stop signs. You gotta stop for lights. And how many times, including in our lifetimes, have you ridden a bike when you were a kid? Did you said, oh, I gotta stop for the stop sign. I gotta stop for.
Always, always stop for the light. Always, always.
But I mean, that's part of the problem. It's not just the kids. It's, it's educating the parents. By the comments that we saw on the social media.
Yeah.
And the woman that spoke to me last Monday here, they didn't have this knowledge that there's laws that they have to obey by.
Right.
So enforcement's great. And I know that, um, ignorance of the law is not an excuse. But guess what? In the juvenile court system.
It is.
And they're going to look to dispose of something pretty quickly. Let's be realistic. They said, well, the parent didn't know any better. So we slapped them on the wrist. Take that kid and get him involved in some other programs and that's about what we're going to get out of it.
And, and so when you write the infraction though, there, is there a fine with, it depends on the infraction obviously or what?
Some have infraction fines.
Yeah.
But like John was talking about the helmet.
Yeah.
Rule.
Yeah. No, there's nothing.
A written warning.
Yeah, got it. Yeah.
You know.
And to be fair, our Safe Kids Wear Lids program, which hopefully I'll be, I just spoke with our local ice cream shop today. Um, so hopefully by the end of the week, we'll put something out that we're going to start it earlier this year. But.
Yeah.
That program alone, it's a great incentive, but I don't think a small ice cream cone reward is going to, that, the ones we're dealing with, the stuff on helmets.
Maybe it works with the tweens. It's not going to work with the older teens. Maybe.
And with the infraction, they go to court, the parent has to go to. You pay the infraction.
If they're older than the age of sixteen.
Sixteen, they have to have a juvenile referral.
Oh, they do. That, that, that was my.
They have to appear and a parent is supposed to appear with them.
Okay, that's what they, uh, that's.
If a parent says, I'm not signing the juvenile referral.
Yes.
The kid can sign their own referral.
Okay. And what happened? So they signed the referral? What, what?
They said they're going to go to court.
And they don't, and they don't have to. No one.
Well, if, if you're a juvenile and you fail to appear in court, there's really no warrant for a minute of fear.
Right.
For a juvenile.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
He's not going to ride his bicycle there.
Yeah, no, no. Yeah, right, right.
I, you know, I mean, I saw some of the comments and I had some comments sent to me and emails, oh, we should seize the bikes.
Yeah.
Can't seize their bikes. There's, there's laws against that.
Yeah, yeah.
I understand the frustration.
Yes.
Definitely understand the frustration.
Yeah, sure.
These guys have been working on it since January.
Oh, yeah. No, we know that.
And we did it last summer. So it's.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we, we appreciate you because being, you know, getting this out, that's who I wanted you guys to come tonight. And I know you've been working on it. Uh, but, but you're right. I mean, you look at social media, again, it's all, you know, typically, much of it is misinformation and it's great to get this out, what the, what the laws are, what we're doing. We're do, I know we're doing everything possible. Um, in a, in a, within impossible scenario, quite frankly, in today's world, but.
Looked at like didn't we consent counter about the cycling event?
Yeah.
It would be nice if these kids said, hey, I'm going to go get involved with the.
Yeah.
Berlin High School cycling.
Right, right.
But the target that we're seeing is. Gets involved generally. You can get them when you're younger.
Yes.
That's where we have to really get them.
Yeah. Well, appreciate that. Any other question?
I just, I just have one comment. Uh, from where you're at today, you know, and the weather's getting warmer, obviously, and, you know, kids will be getting out of school. I would like to see what your stats are from today, you know, like maybe in July to see, you know, what, you know, what's actually transpired. And if, you know, there's violations that happened or, or whatever, because, you know, you're going to get more and more, uh, kids out on the road once the weather gets a little bit better. But I was just, you know, would like to see something where, you know, you know, just as an information, like an F Y I. To see where, you know, what's transpired with your program and everything after, uh, you know, we've had a chance for the kids to get out.
Sure. And I do send, um, those that don't know already, I do send it out a juvenile monthly report, um, to the chief. Okay. So it does touch on anything that happens juvenile related. If, if it does rise to a level where some of these youths are getting, issued an infraction or summons or even juvenile review board, I know about it. It's in my monthly report. So we're documenting that. Uh, and that's how I know that so far we have not issued anything or done anything outside of warning, um, educating. So we'll know if it does increase dramatically by July.
Yeah, it'd be something, it'd be something, you know, to, uh, you know, look at, you know, based on your program and, uh, see what's going on.
Yes.
Yeah. Just a suggestion, um, for the helmets, I, I'd approach the, uh, line, Berlin Lions Club. They've been pretty generous in town lately.
All right. Well, thank you for coming. We appreciate it. Um, appreciate what you do for Berlin. Thanks for.
Before I vacate.
Yes, sure.
One more thing.
Sure.
Uh, we spent a lot of time, obviously with good reason, um, on the negative behavior of kids.
Yeah.
I do want to thank and commend all the parents and kids out there that are doing the right thing, that are making sure their kids are riding safe.
Yes.
Second say for all the, all the kids we see doing the wrong thing out there, there's ten more that are doing the right. Um, so there are a lot of kids in our community and we're fortunate to have them. And we're fortunate to have a community that parents can trust. They could go out and have fun and be safe.
Agreed.
Continue to do our best to, uh, maintain.
It's always the small percentage one that, uh, you know, causes the problem. So, uh, thank you all. Thank you very much. Thanks, Chief.
All right.
Okay.
On, um, send item number two now.
Yes.
Is, uh, the. Believe Mr. Bajor ski is here to talk about, uh, grant opportunities for the connection of the generator.
Yes.
Hey, Joe.
Hey, Joe.
Good evening. How are you guys doing?
Good. How are you?
There you go.
Charlie Brinzig, Vice Chair. Um.
How are you?
Good. How is everybody here?
Good.
I'm not sure everybody's familiar with me. I have spoken before.
Yeah.
Um, well, it's been a year. We had the, uh, transfer switch was held up for a year for the generator.
Held up because we couldn't get it or what?
Well, I don't, I'm not going to look into that just yet because last year, I was informed that we had money to do the pad and everything.
Yes.
And now I am informed this year that we don't.
Be, being the housing authority.
Correct.
Does not have.
Berlin Housing.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm here to talk about the C D B G if, or C B D, whatever it is.
The grant, yes.
And the house puts that in for us?
Yes. How much is that grant for?
I don't know. I, I have a figure of fifty eight thousand. I don't know how much that grant.
Do we know what it costs to get? So the pad is not done. The transfer switch is not there.
None of that. What you have generously given.
Is the generator.
There.
The piece of equipment, yes.
I totally appreciate that.
But what do you think the cost of that is? Do we know the cost of the pad?
Well, we've been through several managers, right, Joe? So what do we, what do we estimate that cost?
Well, no, we haven't been through several managers. Um, so I can shed some light on that. Uh, we have a, bid from Mace Company out of Plainville, Connecticut. Um, this is dated back in October of twenty three, for fifty eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. That includes the, uh, two transfer switches that would need to be installed. And those transfer switches are still on, um, backwater. So, um, from October, it was going to be a year to get those transfer switches delivered. Um, the rest of it has to do with the conduit, with the piping, the, uh, electrical connection between the six hundred amp and the four hundred amp, A T S in the electrical room, uh, installing a block heater and battery charger for the, uh, uh, four hundred amp panel in the basement. Uh, relocating a boiler panel feed and, um, putting in the concrete pad and, uh, doing that, the groundwork activity around the ground pad. Uh, so the total of that.
Total, Joe, fifty eight?
Fifty eight thousand, six hundred and fifty thou, uh, excuse me, fifty eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes.
But the transfer switch is still, we don't have.
Right.
We will not, we will not have those until October of twenty four at the earliest. So we can get, we can get everything installed, but the, the major component is the, uh, transfer switches. And those one, those will not be available until, like I said, October twenty four at the earliest.
Yes, but I'd like to get everything else in place because this has been going on, for several years and supposedly last year we had money for this. How's it going to do with you guys? Have to do with our commission and now this year we don't. So I'd like if we could get money from the grant. I have no clue how the grant works. You'd have to tell me or how you.
So again, the, the grant, the, the grant commissioner, your intrinsic is referring to is the community development block. Uh, we have exercised this grant process in the past. It's for one point two million dollars. Uh, we were going to incorporate this into the grant process, the fifty eight thousand dollars. Uh, the remainder balance of the one point two million dollars would go towards the replacement of the roof, gutters, downspouts, et cetera, at the, um, senior center and at the, uh, principal heights, uh, senior residences. Uh, additionally, we are looking to, uh, do sidewalk repairs on that property. We are looking to do a replacement of the enter, entryway door system and the, uh, basically the electronics involved in allowing tenants to open their, the, the secured, secure doors from their apartments. Uh, you know, recognizing who's at the doors, a visitor who's coming to see them and allowing them access into the structure. Um, so basically, in terms of roof replacement, in terms of that entry system, we're also talking about replacing the carpeting, um, where the floor coverings at, um, principal heights. Uh, the residential component of that building. Um, so that would essentially spend the one point two million dollars that we have.
Um, so that, that, uh, yeah, yeah. That, uh, that, so that grant, you, you haven't applied for that yet?
No, uh, the grant application.
And what's the date to apply and when do we think it's going to be?
It's going to be in April.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
I've been told it's in April. Excuse me?
Uh, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Bajor ski, I just have a couple of questions about this. I believe it's April fifteenth for a deadline. At least that's what it's been in the past. I think you're going to probably need at least three estimates in terms of whatever the projects are that you're planning on putting in for. Um, and seeing is that we're at the end of March. I don't know how fast you can work to get that done.
When is it rewarded, awarded?
We normally, we normally.
But I know the deadline's mid-April.
We normally.
Would you have one bid for this project? At least the piece with the generator?
Yes.
So.
Do you think it would be a good idea to have more than one bid on a project that was this significant?
Yes.
Well.
Butler. Didn't we get a bid from Butler?
But they never completed the bid. They gave us an estimate, but it wasn't an actual bid for the project. It was more of a cost estimate. Um, we can get, I mean, this is not a complicated project, so we can get bids relatively quickly. We do have a capital needs assessment on both properties. Uh, so, you know, the cost of these improvements are outlined in the capital needs assessment.
So I, I might make a suggestion. The grant for the roof sidewalks, all the other stuff, one point three million. Yeah.
Yep.
I, I think we already offered this on the council level. I believe we did a, a few months ago. The, the town, I, if the council votes this way, I think the town could, could, uh, look, look into this and, uh, forget about the grant for the generator installation. I think we should cover it. I, I think we should.
Okay.
Multiple sources to find a transfer switch. There's, I could think of Prior Electric in town. There's a couple of electrical contractors in town. I think we need to scour the earth for the transfer switches if we got to wait till October, which I know, I understand that. I, I, I know would like to. Outrun into that and, and, uh, other companies. I get that, but typically somebody could usually find them somewhere. And just foot the bill for this. I, I really think, uh, we need to do it and start. Work, look for the transfer switches. You could take that out of the grant. Uh, you know, I don't know if you leave it in, what happens. I, I don't really care at this point. I think the generator needs to get done. The rest of it, absolutely. Please get the grant done. That's some, you know, great significant work for the, the senior center, but I, I don't think we could wait for the grant for the generator. We waited long enough and, uh, I think the town, I think, we'll see what the council thinks, but we, we could, uh, appropriate that. Uh, funding for that. I think it's that important. Yes.
Very good.
Okay.
Question, Joe, for you. Are you applying for C D V G grant? You as the, from the housing authority?
Well, the town of Berlin would have to apply for it. Um, you know.
Have to apply.
On behalf of the, on behalf of the housing authority. The housing authority would take care of, you know, through the projects, um, I can't remember, the project consultant, uh, which we normally hire. Uh, he would apply on behalf of the town. He'd fill out the paperwork and make the application and, uh, submit the supporting documents. You know.
Time, time.
Highly unlikely it's going to happen before April fifteenth.
Apply for that grant.
Grant.
Yeah.
Time.
So much work involved. C D B G grant.
Yeah, they are complicated, unfortunately. Yes, agreed. Well, that's why.
So, uh.
Generators come.
We've been, we've been through this several times because I believe, I believe we've, uh, brought in about four million dollars to the housing authority through the C D B G program. So this is not our first rodeo on this, uh, this project.
They're saying we don't have time. It's already end of March almost.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, you know, well.
I think the mayor has a good idea that we address the generator now, since it's been three years and there's no money. And I think that we need to.
Too bad enough.
I mean, we've been talking about this for a while.
So, but let, let's, can, can we, at least on the outside chance, we hook up with, you know, on that grant with Jim. So, but let, let's, can, can we, at least on the outside chance, we hook up with, you know, on that grant with Jim Mahoney, yourself, or whoever, you know, would apply for the grant. And if we can get it done, certainly get it done. Huh?
Yeah, we would apply. Yeah, if we could have authorization to, uh, hire, or, you know, get a project manager on board. You know, we'll get this project submitted for application. So.
To hire who? What?
A project.
They're going to.
No, we'll do it. The town will do it. Jim Mahoney can work on grants. He's, he's the guru. Why don't we just let him work on it?
Okay.
Can we do that?
Yeah, but, oh, you need to reach out to Jim. He doesn't know anything about this. He can't just write up a grant.
Right. Yes.
Know what this grant.
Of course. No, they gotta talk.
Well, in, in the past, we've hired, in the past, we've hired Wagner Associates to handle the, uh, and they're paid through the grant proceeds. So I know the town's hired Wagner in the past, so I'm not sure. We've never dealt with Mahoney on the, uh, CDBG portion.
Well, let's, let's reach out to Jim. Not saying you can't do it that way, but why don't you just start talking to him and see what you get out of that? And let's just take the general installation out of the grant and let's just.
All right.
Let's just try to get it done.
Excuse.
Yes.
That's fine. If we.
Yes.
If you guys were giving me money, I'll gladly take it.
Yeah.
Does this have to come back for approval by the town council?
Yes.
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 Okay, so it has to go on the April ninth agenda?
The grant.
Yes.
I'm just letting you know, you've got a tight schedule. So, Joe, you better contact Jim. Mahoney.
I show.
And how, and, and the rest of this now with the generator, what, what do we, what do we need to run?
Your request.
Yes.
Doug has reached out to, uh, is getting an RFP out so that we can get at least, uh, two to three quotes.
Okay.
Pretty much design bill for the whole thing.
Yes.
That it's not piecemeal one at a time and.
Yes.
One guy is going down the shop and getting a switch from here and a wire from there.
Yeah.
Do the whole thing.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Design bill, get it done. So.
Okay.
Uh, timeframe judge, uh, I'm sorry, Doug. One, one minute, please. When do you think we'll have that? If you?
Okay. Yeah, fine.
So you want us to get two more quotes?
Doug's gonna do it.
Yeah.
Doug, you're gonna get two more?
I'm sorry. We'll, we'll, we'll do handle the generator period.
Yeah, but the town will just take care of generator. You guys don't have to do anything. We'll take care of it.
Concentrate on the one point two.
Yes. Concentrate on that other grant. We're going to take care. Yes. Yes, we are.
Thank you so much. I don't know. I'm gonna have tears. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Do we need any permission from the housing authority to work on their property?
But we'll figure that out. We'll figure that out. We can do it, right, Jeff? No problems. Yeah, okay.
Do it. You know, I'm okay happy.
No, I'm just.
That's his happy face.
That's his happy face. He's an attorney. They're never happy. What, the grant?
It's conduit, federal money conduit through Connecticut, so it's got to comply with federal uniform guidance procurement standards.
I mean.
There's all kinds of, there's a whole, there's a whole grant manual on it. Yeah, 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 yeah. Set aside.
Yeah.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm grimacing about is.
About the grant? Yes. Well, agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we'll try, Joe, you know, we'll, we'll see what, what you guys do with the grant. Talk to Jim. No, I get it. Talk, talk to Jim. Yes. The generator out of the process into the town and Doug's working on it. Thank you, Doug. And we'll, we'll get the, we'll get it done. We'll get it done.
Doug's happy face still.
All right. You're welcome. Anything else, Joe? We good?
No, that's good for now.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Yeah, you got it. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Been in touch.
All right. We'll talk to you.
Number three.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's police vehicle emergency equipment. We are getting, uh, four new vehicles for the PD. And we have using Norcom, Norcat Connecticut for installation of equipment. All those four vehicles, we have the money in place. The estimate is sixty-five. We have sixty-nine thousand in total, and just in case there are any price variations, we're asking for your approval to go ahead and get this equipment installed on the new vehicles in a while.
Yes, it has. All right. Any questions? Questions? Take a motion?
Move to approve awarding the contract to Norcom Incorporated for the purchase and installation of equipment for four police vehicles under state contract number one nine PSX zero zero eight eight for the amount not to exceed sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? All right, so moved.
Great. Thank you. Uh, agenda item number four. Is, uh, Timberland golf course.
Yes.
Um, they actually need to replace the mower and they have the money in a, the truck line that they have had for a while. So this is to move money from one line to another. Go ahead and, um, purchase the greens mower.
So the pickup truck costs more, the same as a mower today. What's the world coming to? No, no, I mean, I know, I know it's a big commercial, what I'm just saying.
Has nothing to do with it.
No, no, no.
Money was in the line.
No, no, I'm just saying, like, you know, it's kind of funny.
You can get a pickup for thirty-five.
I know. Yes, you could.
Then you can get a mower with the.
That's true. That's true. No, I get it. It's just kind of funny.
Any comments, Saul, on the mower?
How are we doing, Saul?
It's expensive.
Thank you, Rosha. Hi, council.
Hi, how are you?
Uh, if you're wondering why we're doing the used route, uh, the main advantage is getting it, you know, to the facility as quick as possible. Uh, if you're going for a brand new route, for the moment you sign the invoice, there's like a more than a year wait to actually get the unit in.
Amazing.
So. To speak about the pricing, it's up to thirty-five.
Yeah.
I don't think it'll be close to that. Um, that's for a used mower. A brand new one these days is over fifty, so.
Jesus.
We feel this route is a better route for the golf course.
Used.
Yeah, okay. No, yeah, no, we get it. We, we, we get it. Well, I think, I think we talked, didn't we talk about this mower before? Yeah, we talked about this before. So, um, if, if there's no questions, I know we, we've discussed this, um, we'll go, we'll go ahead and take a, a motion unless you guys got anything else. Okay, good.
Move to approve the request to transfer thirty-five thousand dollars from the pickup truck account to the greens mower account.
Take second on that. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, so move. Number two, motion.
Right, move. Move to waive the town's bidding procedures and approve the purchase of a used greens mower from John Deere for no more than thirty-five thousand dollars, since this is in the best interest of the town.
Second?
Second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Sorry, so moved.
Right, thank you.
Thank everyone.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Saul.
Agenda item number five is, uh, has to do with two cooling chillers at the Berlin High School under factory service agreement. Uh, needs additional repairs and component replacements were discovered during the inspection. We have, since it's going over twenty-five thousand, we are asking the council for your approval. Doug, see if you have any questions on this.
So, so the, these are from the inspection we did on these, uh, factory service agreement, additional repairs. Okay, so these aren't covered. All right, and we got the, this is the estimate here from, uh, what's that contract we're using?
Come up, Doug.
Hey, Doug, just what's that contract we're using?
This is a, we have a service contract.
Oh, we do? Okay, that's it.
What is not covered with a service contract.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's my question. So we have a service contract on.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Hey, how are you?
Yeah, it's factory service. Uh, it's a national contract.
Okay.
Like in the local branches out of Brookfield down in the Danbury area.
Okay.
So just our expenditures to date, we have our, our annual service agreement is about fifteen thousand dollars. That covers the inspection, startup, general maintenance, repairs.
Okay.
This year we had a, an eddy current test, which is recommended every three years. We've been doing that, um, every three years since they've been put in. They, they are two thousand thirteen, believe it or not, so they are ten years old now.
Yeah, okay. Hard to believe, but yeah.
I was gonna ask.
Had a couple of computer boards fail. They had to get upgraded, um, and then some other, other associated components that we don't include into a very high expensive whole service agreement. We do recommend in the annual agreement and then anything over and above sometimes hits us here, one, two, three, four, five, so.
Yeah.
They, they are the lifeblood of the building.
Sure.
It's the heart.
Got to have them, yeah. Okay, no, that's, that's fine. You know, they do fail, but all this stuff fails now quickly, unfortunately, especially the boards seem to fail too.
Yeah.
Electronics.
Yeah, they, yeah, I know. It's, so it is. All right, we appreciate that. Um, questions for, any other questions? Okay, none. We'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve die can applied purchase orders up to forty thousand dollars as needed for the remainder of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, utilizing OMNIA Partners Contract Number R two zero zero four zero one for Department Number Sixty-One Contractual Services to cover current invoices and any additional repairs or components needed on the high school chillers outside of the service agreement.
Take a second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Agenda item number six. Uh, one more for Doug.
One more.
Something similar with, uh, the elevators at the Berlin High School, McGee Middle School and Willard.
Yep.
We have a service agreement and need some extra work. Doug can add it.
Yeah, we, we got it. Hit this year with some, uh, five-year mandated testing through the state.
For the elevators?
Yeah, same thing. Our agreements, we have the, the core baseline agreements to cover what's required of the state annual inspections. Anything outside of that, we, we pay hourly T and M. So we got hit with those this year, um, and a few other things, so. Just the, the way the cycle fell, we, we exceeded our, our annual agreement. They are, you know, those cars are getting older. McGee and Willard, we've done modernization and upgrades as needed. Not a full, full-blown replacement, but they are older cars.
Yeah, how old is the Willard elevator?
Willard, that, it goes about thirty years. It's.
Yeah.
The last renovation.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
He goes back to the seventies, but has been updated.
Yeah.
Way.
Yeah.
During the high school project, two of the, two cars were, were refurbished.
Yeah.
Completely replaced, and then we had a new, uh, traction car put in, so. And we're working with not brand new stuff anymore.
Oh, I hear you. I know.
The codes have changed, um, substantially and everything. It gets more and more costly each year. Uh, the rates have gone up through the service provider, the elevator union, the one and only in the state, so we pay three fifty plus an hour for service, so. Anything, anytime the truck shows up to work on an elevator, it's very expensive, so.
What, uh, what, what, what company is servicing them, you know?
Currently it's Kone. They are.
Oh, them.
Kone, Kone Cars and prior to Kone, what they were until acquired by Kone, so.
Yeah.
Do periodically look out at the other providers, um.
Yeah.
In the state, but the rates are very consistent based.
Yes.
One and only.
I agree. I have some experience with elevator repairs. They're expensive and, yeah, you got to get the right company to do it, so that's good. Otherwise it's a problem and they're old, so and I know it's hard to find the parts too, but. Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none? Okay, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve Kone purchase order increases up to forty thousand dollars as needed for the remainder of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, utilizing the State of Connecticut DAS Contract Number one nine PSX zero zero five four to cover five-year testing, additional repairs outside of the service agreement for elevator work at Berlin High School, McGee Middle School and Willard Elementary School.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? So moved.
Thank you. Got to really unite.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Yeah, run, get, get out while you can. All right.
Run, Doug, run.
Don't use the elevator.
Get out while you can.
That early. You'd have been seven thirty the whole day. What happened?
I don't know.
I jinxed it.
Yeah.
All right, uh, agenda number, final agenda, number seven. Uh, we do this every year.
Oh, yes.
Your coun- council is required to, uh, vote to allow any person who is a citizen of the United States of the age of eighteen years old who is liable for a town taxes assessed against him or her on assessment of not less than thousand dollars on the last completed grant list uh, to be, uh, eligible to vote the referendum April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four and May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four if needed.
Okay. Yeah, we do this all the time. All right, any questions, folks? None? All right, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to allow any person who is a citizen of the United States of the age of eighteen years or more who jointly or thoroughly is liable for the town, to the town for taxes assessed against him or her for an assessment not less than one thousand dollars on the last completed grant list of the town to vote in the budget referendum on April thirtieth and May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions? Hearing none. What are the motionals in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed? So moved. Okay, appointment. So if, if I could, uh, hold off on the golf, uh, committee one, this time Kate and, uh, what do we have, a constable two? And we have obviously a bunch of, don't we have a bunch of spots for constables? We do, right? Okay. Is it five spot? Yeah, I did. Yeah, okay. Yep, yep. Okay, well, now there'll be four. If you want to take a nominate.
I nominate Mr. Dominic Bellangio.
Yep.
For town constable.
Thank you. Um, any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, all right. Welcome, Dominic. Okay. All right, where are we at now? Town manager report? Yes, indeed.
Your favorite part of the meeting.
Favorite part?
Short and sweet.
Yes.
Important stuff going on.
Yes. Oops.
Yeah, Peter.
Oops.
Uh, we will be getting, uh, this is good news. The RFQ out for the Knights of Columbus property tomorrow, the latest Thursday.
Oh, great.
Needed some time to gather all the information, all the work that was done before, all the maps, environmental stuff, um, so that people who want to come and look at it, uh, this is an RFQ. They can come and visit the town hall, go through it and do that. So it's all gathered in one place now. And so we'll get it out. We're giving its, uh, short turnaround, um, by April twenty-fifth, a little bit over a month. So we, we expect at least two to three good qualified candidates.
Oh, good. Right.
So obviously, uh, there's a staff committee, uh, Robert Jimoney, myself, I would say, and maybe Maureen. We'll, uh, interview them and bring a recommendation to the council for your consideration.
Great.
It's just something similar to what I'm told we did for the, uh, TOD project.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, right. Good.
Uh, one other that we haven't talked about in a while, but behind the scenes, we've been working tirelessly on seventy-seven Elton Road, which has been a blighted property for, I don't know.
Oh, God.
Or something.
Forever.
Um, what changed last year, um, there was an attorney, I'm not sure whether he was working pro bono or just friend of the family, but have been trying to work with the owner.
Okay.
To get the power-up attorney to sell the property.
Ah, okay, yeah.
And then we, uh, Tony Capola has been helping.
Yes.
Uh, us throughout the process, trying to get them to, uh, take care of the yard, the landscaping, which they did last year. There were complaints about animal infestation and mold and other smells coming out of the property, and we tried to get them to do something which they haven't done. And in between, we are working with a judge. Judge has asked us to work this out and the dates have kept moving forward, so we are coming to the end of the cycle, so there's actual court date that, uh, on April twenty-fifth, Superior Court of New Britain, um, they're going to listen to the case and we are hoping that this could actually happen where the owner agrees to give the power-up attorney. And we have a question that the owner wants to be there.
Yeah.
Vote.
He's usually always missing in action.
Yeah, but he, he's been seen in.
Has he?
Different places, yeah. According to the neighbors.
Seen in different places. Okay.
So the, I'm, I'm told, just you can correct me, um, the court can sell it for us, you know, they have.
Yes.
The guy still pays his property taxes.
Yeah, I know, he does. Yeah, no, I know. He does.
Lot easier than paying property taxes, but you know, the neighbors have been very patient about it.
Yes, they have.
As quickly as possible.
But we've done a lot, you know.
Done a lot.
We've done a lot to.
We, we go there now, there's nothing, the whole.
Yeah.
Yard is clean.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But the building needs to come down.
Yes.
It's horrible.
Oh, yeah.
Last time I visited, the back of the door was broken.
Yeah.
You could actually see, I kid you not, from floor to ceiling, it's packed.
With stuff?
Water, all over the place.
Oh, God.
Stinks like crazy.
What's been?
Yeah.
I don't know how many years it's in vacant, huh?
That's, I'm surprised it hasn't come down.
Yeah, me too. Hasn't fallen down by itself.
So I'll I'll let you know after April twelve.
Oh, good.
What happens.
Um great.
You just keep the pressure on them to try and.
Yes.
On it.
Uh be great to resolve that issue.
Uh we have been, um again, Jennifer's been um reach, will be reaching out soon to the Department of Housing on the restrict in the mobile home park.
Yeah.
With time to work on it, get it done. We have five vacancies now.
Oh, we have, that's what we have right now?
So five out of the sixteen, it's a good time. I, our goal is to try and get everything ready by April, end of April latest. So that by June, we'll be ready when the new leases are signed for the July, beginning July one. To get everybody to agree to the terms and conditions of the deed restriction. So that's going on schedule. The uh on the senior center community center, the Parks and Rec Commission and the Commission of the Aging, they met on March fourteenth. Um and they are planning at their April eleventh meeting. You. They have worked on a plan to reduce the square footage and wood print and all that. I don't know what it is, but they're gonna vote on the eleventh to send it to the council. I would think, since the council meeting is on the ninth, we take it up on April twenty-third, their recommendation.
Yeah.
Presentation.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Does that complete the whole plan from the architect? But that, so that they're, it's done?
Yeah.
He'll, he'll finish what he's gonna recommend. They have reduced the size.
Working together.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah. And then uh last time, we talked about installing two GPS devices with the animal control.
Yes.
They've been ordered.
Okay, great.
How many we install. Uh you hopefully got the report that Jennifer did a comprehensive report on.
Yes.
Falls and what else they do.
Yes.
Assuming you all got.
Thank you for that. Let's look at that and maybe we'll talk about that the next meeting, if we're gonna review that. You guys saw the plan, right? You got it tonight too, if you didn't. It should be there. Look at that.
The copies for.
Yes, yeah, you have copies here. I saw the email too.
Any questions on it?
Not right now. Let's let everybody, you guys kind of read it over, if you would, before the next meeting and and then we'll, we could talk about it next time.
All right.
If we got questions. Since we've, you know, we've done a lot tonight already.
Okay. Um you probably didn't see it this evening. You got a email invitation from uh Jennifer, Jenochoa. Parks and.
Oh, for the.
For the opening of Viscaglio Field.
Yes, I saw that.
Monday, April first at five P M.
Yes.
Um Mr. Allison will be there.
Oh.
Like to acknowledge, recognize him for.
The grant.
In the funding.
Yeah, sure.
And Board of Finance, Board of um Fox from Athletics and all.
Yeah.
Will be there, so.
That's great.
Um we'll talk later.
Yeah.
And say a few words. That'll be nice.
Yeah.
Um April first, five P M.
I think five, right?
You should have an email. It, I saw it.
Yeah. I saw the email.
Has all the details.
Yeah, I saw the email.
Feel free to, I mean, I'm, we're gonna. No, I won't see you before April first. There'll be other meetings, but feel free to reach out if you have any questions on that. Okay?
Yeah.
Uh.
That's good.
Tomorrow, there's a Board of Finance budget meeting.
The final workshop, right?
I've been work, doing the workshop, the mayor and council of each year.
Up here, Arosh, tomorrow at seven?
Day, tomorrow, yeah.
Tomorrow, up here.
The council at seven o'clock. We'll be zoomed to um just a couple of uh decisions they need to make.
Yeah.
The Board of Fed and.
They're doing pretty good.
Well, I, I think. You should.
Not bad.
Well, I don't want to say anything.
Wouldn't want to jinx it, but I don't know, the last meeting was fairly encouraging, but I thought they did pretty, yeah, it's not bad. Not bad.
Um so after that, we have the following Tuesday at uh six P M at the Berlin High School. It's the uh. Uh budget.
The budget meeting, yeah.
Budget meeting, yeah. Um on.
Um, March twenty seventh, right, twenty seventh?
Yeah.
Yes. Six, the sixth, it's the sixth, Tuesday, the sixth, right?
Tuesday, the sixth.
Yeah. Yeah, at six. High school.
And um April thirtieth.
The referendum.
They will um. Yeah, they will um vote to send the budget to the. Soon after that meeting, right, to the referendum.
The March, March thirtieth.
March meeting.
Yeah.
It vote to send the.
To us.
To you.
We meet on the third, right, April third?
The third meeting scheduled.
Yes.
And then.
Just for the budget.
Send it to the uh referendum.
Right. Yep. The week after, yeah, after next.
All right.
Yes.
And then uh just when you get a chance, I I thought it's a pretty good article on Hartford Business Channel.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
A copy there.
Yeah.
Talks about all the development in uh Berlin and all the departments coming up, so.
Stuff.
Uh good article. It pretty much shows that a lot of people want to come and build things here.
Yeah.
A good place to be.
It's a good thing.
Right, so um take a look at it.
Great. That's great.
From all the town staff and everybody else, planning zoning, everybody else was helped.
It's good.
I conclude my.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Roche, special committee reports. What do we have? Uh we had the ordinance committee. We have an ordinance committee coming up before our next council meeting.
Oh, I should have mentioned, yeah, next council meeting.
Yeah. The six o'clock.
Six o'clock, and I would have um.
The chief.
Either the chief, Drew, probably not Drew, one of them.
Yeah.
To come and talk about the noise.
Yes.
And so I've shared the the draft with them.
Okay, good.
Talk about the measuring devices and enforcement.
Good.
That's April ninth.
Ninth, the next council meeting, the ninth. Yes, six P M.
Yeah.
For the ordinance, yeah. Before our council meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. And and the chief's gonna be there. Yeah, we wanted him to see that and talk about, ask him about it, what he thinks. Okay, good, and that's it, right? There was another special committee reports, I don't think that I'm aware of. Um council communications, what do we have? Anything, folks? Nope.